Here, Lev Brown.
Here.
Alex Jones.
Here.
David Lee. Or Jimmy Cowherd, sorry. I should leave.
Here for the first call.
I'm calling, I'm sorry.
I'm here. Is anybody here having some comments or thoughts for the agenda of the line of events? This first special call meeting is to discuss the utility rate study provided to us from Jackson and on with Mr. Jim Marshall, and Mr. Marshall is with us via Zoom tonight to discuss his proposal. Mr. Marshall, are you able to hear us?
Yes. Yes, I can hear y'all just fine. Y'all hear me well.
Yes.
Who is he with, Ron?
Jackson and Tor. Okay. You can start anytime you like, we're ready for that.
Okay. Okay. Uh, thank you. You know, as you all know, you also submitted an RFP to which we responded. Just, my name is Jim Marshall, I'm with Jackson and Thornton. We're an accounting firm headquartered in Montgomery, Alabama. We have a, an office that is dedicated to utility work in, in the city of Franklin, Tennessee, in a small office where I have one person that works with me in Chattanooga. I'm out of our Montgomery offices, I mentioned, and I have our utility consulting group. My, the focus of my career for the last 15 clutch years has been on utility cost of service and rate design. We work with over 100 utilities around the southeast. I am open to any, I will keep this as brief as possible. I'm open to questions, comments, concerns. I thought it might be a good idea to use what a typical council or board presentation would look, uh, to, to use as a, as a basis for conversation. I will say that everything we do adheres to the American Water Works Association M1 Manual. That's the leading resource for water and sewer utilities when it comes to cost of service and rate design. I actually serve on the national committee that helps to write, that, that has written and is in the process of writing yet another edition of that, of that manual. So that, uh, helps me get a, a national perspective that, that can help my, my regional clients. The vast majority of our clients are in the southeast, primarily Alabama, Tennessee, Mississippi, and Georgia. Let me, if, if y'all can, um, I'm trying to, to share my screen, can y'all enable that function on y'all's side? I have a little Zoom pop up that host has just enabled participant screen sharing. If y'all could enable that, we can just kind of walk through a, a sample presentation.
You have to click it there. Whenever you had to pull it up there. Uh, go back, click on the arrow. Yeah. Multiple participants. You have the option now.
Okay. All right, so y'all see a little cover today here?
Yes.
Where municipal electric water and service. And this is a presentation I gave to a municipal system down in South Alabama last month. Um, I've hidden a few slides that, that, that might give, uh, some, some information away specific to that client, but it's, it certainly will be enough to give y'all a, a general feel. Forward is one of the main deliverables of this process. I will say that, that our, our process is we request information, the client provides information, we put it into our models, apply industry standards, methodologies, and essentially build each of your models out, one for water, one for sewer, with, with the expectation that water customers pay for water, sewer customers pay for sewer. Okay? I mean, that's, you want people to pay for the service they receive. Well, once we build out both models, we'll come up, meet with, typically meet with management to make sure that, that the models are, are reasoned from both a, a, the data looks correct, you know, because we, we do not audit anything, we take the data as provided. But, and from a reason, what is the data, and then also a comfort relative to the results. I know industry standards and methodologies, I don't know y'all's system. My job is to be curious throughout this process and ask appropriate questions, but y'all know your system a heck of a lot better than I do. So we will, during that work session, we will make sure that it's a reasonable representation of where it all. Doesn't mean that I'm going to guarantee a good picture or a bad picture, but it will be a reasonable picture. And then from there, if there are discrepancies on, on where you are relative to, to where you need to be, we'll develop a plan to, to come to council, and then there will be a council meeting, uh, which is where this, this presentation or a similar type of presentation will be given. The work session will take several hours, think four or five hours going over two studies. The presentation, we try and, and, and provide as much information as we can in a, in a quick form. So that, so that as, as council members, y'all have a good feel for where you are and a good feel for where you need to be, so that if there are any decisions that need to be made, you'll have enough information so that the, you know, regardless of whether you approve or disapprove of any rate action, you'll at least have an appropriate level of information with which to make an informed decision. All right, so, jumping into this here. Typical objectives of a study, and this is just kind of the lead-in on any of the presentations we do. Number one goal is make sure you have sufficient revenue for the system. And underneath that fairness and equity, meaning you will ideally in cost of service, everybody pays their fair share, nothing more, nothing less. As a publicly known utility, there is no profit motive, but there's always, there should, there should always be the goal of, of having, you know, being able to make deposits or bringing money to support a, a capital infrastructure fund, because it is a capital intensive business operating the utility. Now, I seen one and two, affordability there, number three, affordability is becoming a bigger and bigger issue. Is, is regulatory agencies are not going to regulate themselves out of a job, any new, any new format or any new twists, trends, stars, going to be an increase in expenses on the utility side, um, as well as, just looking at the inflationary environment that we're in now, that, um, that's driven up costs, we got people that are looking at a, at a minimum 30% increase in our chemical expenses compared to 22, compared to 21. Simple rates, I'm a big proponent of simple rates, and defensively, I mentioned that the, uh, the M1 Manual being, being the leading resource, in essence, you don't want your rates to be arbitrary and capricious, you need to have sound rationale based off industry standards to support, to support your rates and why they are where they are. I'll review the process real quick, just by system, one, you know, looking at water and sewer line, how much money does each system need to make? And then look at that revenue requirement by rate class. And we look at that one of two ways, one is truly is a rate class, which is a type of uses, residential versus commercial versus industrial, is, is examples, or by meter size, you know, three quarter inch, one inch, two inch, and so on. Typically, those customers use your system different. You know, if y'all want to have one big, just as a, as a very basic example of allocating expenses to different types of users, if y'all sold water to one big commercial entity that was 30% of your, your consumption, would it make sense to charge them for 30% of your volume that you're buying from Galt? 30% of your water costs. But when you look at employee expenses on the Westmoreland side, it doesn't really make sense to send them 30% of, of some employee expenses, you know, at the administrative side. They're only one customer, so they would get a much smaller portion of a, of a administrative salary, if you will. But it's, once we allocate between rate classes, we then look at, and I touched on it just now, a fixed expense versus a variable expense. Your biggest variable expense is going to be the amount of water you all buy from Galt. You know, examples of, of big fixed expenses could be debt service, could be meter reading, basically expenses that don't vary based off the amount of water purchased or sold. And from that, we're able to design cost of service based rates. And if there's, if it gaps between your current rate and the cost rates, we could look at potentially implementing rate changes. All right, so this is, as I mentioned, this is an example from a, a system down here, and it's probably about two hours south of where I am now. This is for their water system and, and water alone, but just from a format perspective, this should provide a baseline, um, of consideration. But we look at things on a cash needs basis, how much cash needs to come into the, O and M, that's a 760,000, oh, excuse me. And then this system has payment and limits, municipal system where they have to pay into the general fund, and the water portions, the water assigned portion of the general fund's 210,000. They have debt service of 344,000, that includes principal and interest. Okay? Not just interest. And then rate funded capital, basically looking forward, what does this system want to invest in their infrastructure on an average annual need of the next three, four, or five years? We always like to look at a forward-looking capital work plan, or at least capital estimates, as opposed to depreciation. You know, depreciation is not a cash expense, so it's not included in that top line of 760,000. So for this system, we know we have a target of 1.6 million. We back off a little bit of other revenue, that's what the payments, interest income, basically any income y'all get from anything other than selling water, so the rates need to generate about 1.6 million. You know, for these guys, this is always interesting. For every dollar that needs to come in, what's causing it? So for them, 19 cents for every dollar being directly reinvested, and there's just 47 cents of every dollar going to pay O and M. And, you know, you can see the remainder there, but that's always neat to see where you are, you know, what is driving our expenses? And you can see on a per dollar basis how, how that can look. Your revenue requirement by rate class. So for these guys, we have the system total again right at 1.6. Well, what rate classes are causing us to incur those expenses? And they said that's driven by your billing statistics that you would provide us on a, you know, monthly basis for the, for the test year, for the last fiscal year. You know, number, number of bills by rate class, amount, amount of consumption and our revenue by month by each rate class, that's what we used to allocate those expenses that I've just walked through at a very high level to get to that 1.6. So you can see here largely, and we had a total system need of 1.6, and you've got these five rate classes, and if we were to stack them on top of each other, obviously would equal the system total. And this, this boxes here, I redacted some information here for the last second, those are, um, excuse me, that, those are two wholesale contracts that, that have the municipality's name to actually buy us from this, from this system here, and I just wanted to be air to the side of, of, of the conservative side of that there relative to disclosing anything. Recovery by rate class. Each, each study that we do will be about 40 to 50 pages of spreadsheets. It's a ton of information that we look at in a handful of different ways. The best tip in making the sausage, this is, this is, you know, you know, letting y'all see what the, you know, really have a little bit of taste of the sausage. You see this recovery by rate class, the system itself is at 73%. That means it's bringing in 73 cents on every dollar it needs to bring in. In a perfect cost of service world, the system and each of the rate classes grew at 100%. That means everybody's paying their fair share, nothing more, nothing less. So this system is at the second 3 cents on the dollar. Obviously, we need to look at raising our rates. Again, these two being wholesale contracted customers, not a lot of flexibility here, it's just poorly written contracts for the wholesale provider in this instance. But if you remember, we just looked and their, their overall need was right at 1.6 billion, but we have revenue of just under, just under 1.2. So their short 430,000, with general service inside, the vast majority of their customer base is at 77 cents on the dollar. So in this scenario, that, that hole, this gap here between the 77 and the 100, and more importantly, the 73 and the 100, weren't, that hole wasn't dug overnight, we're not going to try and fill it in overnight, don't want to cause any potential economic dislocation. So without going into the weeds too much, we, on the general service inside, I have this illustrated here in a moment, our recommendation after meeting with management, the, the recommendation that I took to their board room was really a three-step process. And it was to increase the customer charge, they had about $2 a month in the first year, and then add a little bit there on the volume metric rate, and then increase the customer charges in, in year two and three by $3 each year. And the, the reasoning for that, you can see this blue line here. This is their cost of service on a per unit basis. So this, for this water utility to have a true cost of service based rate, they have a $27.19 customer charge without any water included, and then they could charge $1.83 for every thousand gallons that they sold. That's that blue line. So a 1,000 gallon customer is costing them just under $29. This, the red line is where their current rate is before this, before this plan was implemented. If you're below the blue line, you're losing money. If you're above the blue line, you're making money, very simply put. One of the big drivers in this instance, and the reason that you can see, at full implementation, we're talking about an $8 increase on the customer charge. Well, a, a big driver for this was some debt service that has not yet come on, so we want to step into the debt when they finally have to start, I think they'll draw the money down in about a year, and they'll have about another two years before they pay, start paying principal, so it makes sense to step into that over a three-year period to allow them to take smaller blanks, but still be able to pay the debt when the debt hits. Every situation is, is different, but the whole idea is to get your revenue curve in line with your cost curve. You can see this red compared to the blue, they were, they were way out of line. So it was outside looking in, it was an obvious solution on my end, um, but there, there comes a time where in reality, is a $25.50 customer charge, and then this is what their board had to consider, and we got a good conversation about it, is that 25.50, is that, is that fair? Is that reasonable for their customer base? And they, they decided that it was. And here you can look at, at rate impacts, you know, it's on an average customer right here at 5,000 gallons. You know, it's costing them 36, 34, they're getting about $10 less. So we, we bumped it up and over a three-year implementation, you know, they'll lead into its flow. So it's, you know, again, what, what happens to my computer models may not necessarily be what y'all want to happen in your community, and it's figuring out the best, if, if there is a gap there between the results of the analysis and, and the political will, you know, what's, how do we close that gap, what do we need to do? And this shows that at full implementation of that three-year plan, where we were able, where we're able to go relative to recovery, because it is terribly important that each system be able to stand on its own. And this gets us to, to 94%. And I will say with a caveat, we are negotiating with these two wholesale customers, that if we can get them closer, you know, if we can, especially this instance here, at 44%, if we can get them in line with where they need to be, then that 94% of their on the farm will be closer to 100%. But where we drew the line, and I completely supported the board in this, in this situation, they did, if they want, they're, you know, if you look over here, this TSI is general service inside, so that's the citizens of their community. These two wholesale customers live outside of their community, all right? So why in the world am I going to make my folks pay a premium in order to get these guys out here at this point? These folks don't live in directly in our community, they're, they're in neighboring cities. These are our core customers here inside the city. So that's, the general manager and I are currently trying to work with the, um, the folks in these other two water systems on, on a fair wholesale rate. That's, I really just want, and that is a very quick and dirty synopsis of a, of a study to give y'all an idea as to what, what a board deliverable or council deliverable would look like. Again, this is boiling down somewhere between 40 to 50 pages of information into what is theoretically a black-sized information and will be much more powerful in, in, in front of one, in front of one another face-to-face and not over Zoom. Thank y'all for your, your flexibility with that tonight. What, what questions, thoughts, concerns do y'all have on y'all's side for me?
Can you talk to us a few minutes about how, we talked on the phone, how you give the projections for the build-out of our system for future needs and capacity questions and stuff, working with engineer and some different things?
Yeah, that's, you know, relative to, to cost of service and rates, one of the, one of the key elements, in this instance, we have four buckets that we're trying to fill, right? We have your ongoing O and M, they pay money back to the city's general fund, debt service, and rate funded capital. The rate funded capital number is, is driven by what y'all need to do going full, from a, a reinvestment or an investment into your infrastructure. I am in no way qualified to tell y'all what y'all need to do, that that's not what I do, I'm a, I'm a finance guy, I'm not even trying to pretend to be an engineer. So we work with your, your consulting engineering firms, you know, that's, you know, typical process where, you know, as the client, y'all provide us with your work plan, what are y'all going to do over the next three to four, five years? And then if it comes out to y'all need to just pull the numbers out of thin air, if y'all need to spend, you know, a billion dollars a year, so that over five years, so that's a $5 billion work plan. How much of that's going to be funded from rates? How much is funded from current cash? How much is funded from debt? Right? So if there's, if you're looking at going, you know, in, in a scenario, you would have to go to the bond market for whatever reason, within probably two to three years, well then let's go ahead and plan on that. Let's, let's build around that, you know, whatever that debt service would be, and incorporate that into the model. Instead of budgeting a million dollars a year in that scenario under the rate funded capital, maybe, maybe we're funding 800 from rates, and there's 200 that a week we'll use, you know, until we borrow money, that we'll have to pay $200,000 a year back on. But it's very important that we look at what your, relative to cap, or we look at your future capital needs, or that y'all will look at it so that I can build, help y'all build rates around. But I'm, you know, I do want to be very clear, that is outside of my expertise and outside of the scope of the engagement letter, engagement letter submitted. We will work with consulting engineers or in-house folks routinely, but we don't help produce, develop any type of, of engineering or, or capital plan. But it is important that if you do have a, a capital and infrastructure plan, I, I hope that you have a financial plan that works in line step-by-step with the capital plan.
So may I have any questions?
What would be the timeframe, uh, he can't hear me, so I have to ask him. The timeframe of doing this study with our size customers?
Mr. Marshall, we have an audience participating wanting to know the timeframe of this study.
It would be, our hope would be, from receipt of information, we'd be back with the management team to conduct a work session within four to six months. And then a, a council or board presentation would follow, but that would be obviously y'all's discretion.
Oh, when Mr. Marshall and I talked from the phone about the timing of the plan and why the phases have multiple years, he discussed the advantage of the third year being a look back at the actual revenue from the two previous years to kind of check it out and balance it out, so it's not just done and forgotten now. So it's a pretty good, for the three years, it covers an, an actual outage instead of what you need to do situation, to be like what happened near our timeframe. So that, that, because I was first concerned that if we needed three years, was it necessary? But after we talked about it, I see the benefits of doing it over the timeframe that they're proposing to do it. We can get started within four months of getting it together.
Okay, I'm here for the industrial board, so that's why I've got questions. Is the cost still the same as what you quoted us before, or has he come up with a different cost factor?
Mr. Marshall, she's asking about the cost of your proposal over the period of time. Has that changed or is it still the same as what's in the proposal? Or how, how would that change over this time period?
The, um, all right, so I have, I have submitted two, what I'll call formal document, documents to y'all. One is the, uh, the response to the RFP was submitted on January 10th, and then on February 3rd, I sent a, an engagement letter that, that really outlines two fee approaches. One is kind of a one and done, we build it out, and then we go our separate ways after, after one round of studies. And that, that is quoted in, in both at $30,000 to have a one and done. And then the second approach, and the one that we do more often than any other, is over a five-year period, do three rounds of studies. And those would come to, you know, over that multi-year engagement, we conduct studies in year one, year three, year five, so every other year would be $20,000 per round. A big driver in that pricing alternative for us, I don't want the one-year fee to be, the rate studies should not cause a rate increase. But that's, to fully load, everything we do is Excel model, Excel-based, so, but we would incur a lot of time on our end there and expense to make the bluff hit the hang. So it allows us to spread this, allows y'all to spread those, the payment for those costs out, um, and it really helps fine-tune your rates. Look at it in three, have three formal studies done in a five-year period using outside consult events. Part of my role is to get y'all to do as little to your rates as possible. I, I would love to be able to get y'all to come up there and say, y'all are, y'all are in great shape, you don't have to do anything. Those, those meetings right now are few and far from plenty. We just had two in East Tennessee right before Christmas, two clients we've been working with for, for over a decade, and they didn't have to do anything, they were in great shape. Balance, and that with, you know, this scenario, I just watched y'all three today, looking there just a minute ago, you know, we're looking at $8 worth of inquiries that you leave these folks on our customer charge over three years here. Did that, did that answer your question? your question?
I believe that's all the questions we have at this time.
Okay. All right, we'll, I appreciate y'all's time. And if there, you know, what I said, I'll be here with me all at some point, or do y'all want me to sit around anything else I can contribute or clarify?
We'll discuss this and Keisha, or someone, when you tell her, I'll contact you in a moment. We won't wait for what actions we took tonight.
Okay.
All right. Let's, let's talk about it from the financial perspective of how we need to do this or whatnot. His proposal, pretty straightforward, but he's talking about the one and done. I don't have that information.
Page, he didn't talk about page six. Page six is the three-year study, not just, not the five.
Well, that was the words for page.
Page six, in that, to go back the other way. It was before the exhibits. It says page six at the bottom.
All right, that's the page I was looking at. That is a three-year, three-phase study?
Yeah, that's the three phase.
Yes.
He didn't mention that.
No, he told me a five thing.
Because that's sixty?
Yes.
For that entire thing?
Yes, but that's the only information that I have. Do we have that information in the referendum?
The February third letter? Do we have that? I don't recall seeing it, but I mean, I'm.
No, I don't have that information.
Okay.
And the letter I have is his initial letter, the proposal, I thought. January the tenth. So we have two options, I suppose, but we only have the backdoor for one. So y'all got a.
Was this the, our proposal turned in for this?
It was.
Yes. Yes, okay.
I'm a familiar with the other information that he referred to, or the one and done option. So y'all have as much information as I do about the proposal and everything that he's got here, right? So what we don't like to do, I think over the three-year period of time, there is money available to pay for this level of study, and I think it is beneficial.
When I've read through this, it's not a sixty thousand upfront, it's as we go, so it's not flat out. We could pull it if we wanted to do it, I think.
Yes, so, you know, I think that's a better option.
You've got twenty thousand from, Matt, you've got twenty thousand from the industrial board. So I, I, they may go back, we might come back, I mean, that could be the first year, we might come back and do more on each stage of the five-year contract.
Of the five, if we did five, if we did the five, because what we have is the three, not the five.
He spoke of the five, we don't have.
We don't have paperwork on that.
Oh, we have one, two, twenty seven, five, eight, nine, ten, three studies.
He just said five-year period reviews on, yeah, three studies.
Like the first year, the third, the tenth year.
It's not really done that way.
Says first year, second year, third year on the report.
And he may be spreading it out over five years, but we need, I guess we should.
I know that it says that they don't want their contract period to exceed five years.
So I think you need to clarify within.
If it's in consecutive years.
Yeah. For the three things.
I mean, I think on the surface of it, it makes sense, opposite of what we're trying to achieve, but yeah, I think, I think we need to make sure we got.
I, I think we need the word of the one and done.
That's what I said, I don't have that, I'm not prepared. So I think, you know, we, we've done that in the past, it's a period where we can go up, up now today, we're questioning, we're making the price for that. It's not, you know, we're at this scale of work, but, you know, we don't have that information in front of us, so y'all, so we're just, we can put this off until, uh, till the, discuss further at the work study to have the information, make the factual decision.
All choice.
I think that's those choices, yeah. Get the answers before we do the.
Formal motion? I make the motion that we postpone this to discuss at the March work study.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to postpone this, postpone this discussion to the March work study. Ms. Keisha, hold the roll, please.
Jones.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Please.
So motion carries, we will refer this to part of the discussion at the March work study. And there's no other information on this agenda. We will adjourn the six-figure special call meeting. It'll take a few minutes until we get into the other meetings. I believe it was advertised as starting immediately after the first meeting, so we didn't have to wait until seven o'clock. We have to wait, we advertised it?
Yes.
So it'll take a few minutes.
Did you get the amount from the earlier today?
The letter, and I'll call them maybe in a quarter, and.
I don't mind it, I'll be able to do a devotion. We'll, we'll go to the Lord in prayer, inspire our angels. Father, heaven, just thank you, Father, for this evening that we learned to come together, Father, and make important decisions for our community, for our, our members of our city. Father, the things that we do, we ask that we glorify you when we make these decisions. We ask, Father, that you'll give us purpose, Father, to make every life and what's born have a quality of life, Father. And we just pray, Father, that we just serve you and give you purpose, Father, in the decisions that we make tonight. We pray that we just honor and glorify you for everything that you gave us. We thank you for our celebrations and our blessings, and we pray, Father, for forgiveness of our sins. We ask, Father, these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Keisha, call the roll, please.
Brown.
Person.
Cameron Calvert.
Here.
Alex Jones.
Here.
David Lee.
Brian Smalling.
Here.
Ted Wilkerson.
Here.
First item on the agenda is to adopt the.
Motion to adopt the agenda reminds me.
A second. We have a motion, a second to adopt the meeting. All of y'all, please say aye.
Aye.
Next, item on the agenda is public comments. We didn't put out a comment sheet.
This is up there.
Richard, would you like to speak on the agenda?
I would. Richard Gray, seventeen sixty-eight, New Orleans, fifty-two, Westmore, number plan surveyor. Wanted to talk about the first item on the agenda, the task order, I guess, for the capacity of the sewer plant. Of course, you know, we're trying to get Pleasant Grove Road, Pleasant Grove Farms off the, you know, off the paper enough as sufficiently to get storage on it. And I wanted to, you know, encourage to get, get, get the engineer to find out what he's, what he's found out and get the subway to find out about our capacities. Appreciate it.
Anybody else from the public, can I speak here to something? Next item on the agenda is the minutes from one twenty-six twenty-two.
Motion to adopt the minutes from January twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two meeting.
One second. We have a motion, a second. Ms. Keisha, call the roll, please.
Calvert.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is December twenty-twenty-one financial statement, and that was referred to the work study to the. I make a motion to adopt or approve the December twenty-twenty-one financial statement. Ms. Keisha, you can call the roll.
Need a second?
Discretion.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. Now let's discuss the, uh, motion. Seems like I haven't heard any more to discuss about.
So the pieces we talked about at the work study, is that reflected in all this?
Then corrected.
And that's all, in the next section, that's what I thought.
Can you, um, can you go over those names real quick?
So it was questioned on the sales tax, on why the amount was so high for the month of November, um, or actually, forty-fifth, and the November amount was included in that as well, and our November amount was one hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. And so I called the county because that's way more than we normally bring in in a month. And they said, we just had our own good one. So I was like, no question it, because they sent it to us, and this is your portion. It was a really good one.
Yeah, that was indeed.
Another line, I don't know, I want to see what that was. It was for two months as well.
Forty-three, one hundred?
Yes, the State Street A. Again, the gasoline tax was for two months because the November check didn't get proceeded in the month of November, so it was four, November and December. And then the other question was on the gasoline expense, you know, the resource authority expenses. Our gasoline check, or our resource authority check actually, no, the gasoline check got coded to the resource authority line item, is what it was. So our gasoline expense got included in sanitation expenses as well as the monthly sanitation expenses. So that's the reason that was so high that month. And we corrected that by reimbursing that fund, so that'll be reflected in February's financial statement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If anybody does have any questions about this new financial statement. Ms. Keisha, call the roll, please.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Motion carries. Financial statement for December has been approved. The next item on the agenda is the January twenty-two financial. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the January twenty-two financial statement.
Full cycle. Here we have a motion, and a second. To approve that financial. Do you have any questions or any discussions about the January financial? Do I have any more questions? Ms. Keisha, call the roll.
Calvert.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
January twenty-two financial statement is approved. We're going to do the business, and that, for item on the total business is title task order number one. Y'all very familiar with this? I have a big copy, which is the same as the tenancy one. Y'all have copies of this? You did include it in their package, right?
We received it.
Yeah, we did. We received it. It hasn't changed or nothing, right?
The total amount, this has been five thousand nine hundred dollars, and this is going to go to work.
I'll make a motion that we go through, or we go through with task order number one, to provide answer of capacity to the sewer plant.
Second.
The Canada, my emotions, so we approve the task order number one, then we can discuss this.
What were you saying?
Okay. It's five thousand nine hundred dollars, and the, the schedule is to, the ability to provide service for the capacity of the sewer plant is for two weeks.
This was after it, it drilled down, it was made a little bit more drastic, thirty-eighties and that.
It's more specific, it's more specific to that name, and I think the original proposal did not have it wrote down into the actual phases and scopes of what they had done. So this is compared to the written draft of the document, this is very good, and very necessary, made to be. I had, I had some notes this afternoon that there were some things I wanted to ask to include about in the proposal, because he's talking about TDX, I believe, to allow us to, you know, expansion on our true, yeah, capacity to perform, those type of things, those are mine, and we need, you know, their information.
So in order to move forward, Pleasant Farms to move forward, though, too, we've got to kind of move ahead of this, correct?
But we also still don't have an answer as far as, does this cost include putting a flow meter on to, and jump into our current sewer system so you can get the data to do the job that he's supposed to do?
That's what part of the proposal is that we provide this.
Okay, so it says we will provide it?
That's what it said.
So that's not included in that five thousand nine hundred?
Review of available flow data provided by the.
So we've got a moment.
Now, we have that in place, we're brought briefly in, Aaron is having a meeting with the general fund day about that procedure start, start is in place. But he does, Logan has been provided three years of existing data, so he has.
He has got it to work with him.
Yes, yes. But the more specific data that he's going with, which is outside of this two weeks of proposal, you know, we'll be putting those, doing that ourselves other time. It says that provided by the, and the, compared, the next item on, we was comparing schedules, infrastructure, and flow monitoring. That's the two items in the video, is scheduled for the new wastewater construction, as provided by W O, and Pleasant Grove Farms, a scheduled construction, which they had provided at two months. So we're a pretty good base into the list of things that are required for this girl construction right here.
So even though he says two weeks on there, it probably is going to be two weeks, is that correct? Because it's going to be longer than two weeks before he gets all the information to start this.
But they, with everything that they have provided, I think they've provided, provided years in each.
Okay.
That's what I said, the things that were going forward, the flow monitoring, like that, that's going to be several months, and that's part of the other, that's part of the concern, that's not bad, are going to be required to be outside of this, because it's in the way. So. From, from my perspective of this, part of the scope, we need to prepare and provide a written option to the city concerning the wastewater treatment plant's ability to serve the, the farm. And as we did talk about this at the work study was, I think they prepared to provide this number, but this contract will allow them to have ownership.
Okay.
That's the more. That's the point. Where if something is wrong in the category or something doesn't go as planned, this is, there are a thousand gallons capacity, a thousand seventeen's fail. And they will take the time to verify that that number we prepared by this is right. That was the biggest thing about this proposal.
So in order to move forward, we need?
We still need to call the roll.
Yes. Do we have a motion to approve?
We already have the motions and.
That's right. In this case, you call the roll, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Right, task order number one is approved. I say you prepare to provide some of the city, that's kind of the first job you have to do. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the service agreement. And the service agreement goes hand in hand with this, I would like to ask you a little on this.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the service agreement?
Second.
Second, approve the service agreement, Miss Chandler? Any discussion on the service agreement?
This is just something we have to, it's a contract, is it correct?
Right, this contract refers to the service agreement, or it actually refers to any additional costs allowed by the service agreement. Which will be for the evaluation and, uh, other, the timeline. Do we have a motion and a second for the service agreement? In this case, you call the roll, please.
Brown?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the new business and the first item under the new business is water bill for fifty-nine, twenty-six, Austin.
I'll go ahead and motion it.
Let's see, make a motion that we approve the adjustment for the sewage.
Right. Get a place for the, uh, the amper of the discussion.
One second.
Motion is second to adjust to one of the fifty-nine, twenty-six, Austin.
So. For discussion?
Yes.
The, the, uh, the owner of the property requested that the city, this board actually reduced the usage to two thousand, uh, units on the sewage. And not adjust the actual amount of the water usage. It's my understanding that that was his, um, uh, request by the board, by the board. He had already had a, I believe, a leak adjustment in a twelve-month period at, uh, sometime in the past twelve months, obviously. And my understanding, I believe, of that was the case. Because the last time it came before the council was, uh, June twenty-twenty-one, right? At that time, his usage, which I'm assuming he's referring to, to his usage of the water was ninety-one fifty. And he believed that at that time, I recall that the meter was bashed and requested the council.
It is tested.
Tested, yeah.
There was nothing wrong.
There was nothing wrong with it, but he, his, his statement was that he thought it was something wrong with the, uh, so.
I'm afraid if we move forward with this, we're setting up the precedence of we're not following our policy. Because our policy states one adjustment for twelve months.
We have done this, we passed, I think we've done it specifically on sewage, that, or.
More than one adjustment?
Yes.
Look at you guys.
I just don't feel that it's right to charge him for sewer, whatever he did, obviously wasn't using that if there was a leak present.
Well, what, I think he said, you, you sent us an email about that if we did change it, if we did adjust the sewage to two thousand, it would change, it would, uh, what was the reduction to?
Uh, it was going to reduce his bill one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty-five cents. It wouldn't mess, it wouldn't touch the water, right? That was just the sewer portion of the bill. Because his bill was initially almost five hundred dollars.
So it would reduce, it would decrease the bill total by one seventy-eight, sixty-five, right?
Yeah, it says his new bill would be two hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-eight cents instead of one hundred and seventy-one.
So that's him paying for all of the water and then just the minimal portion of the sewer.
And his, and his reasoning was, of course, that water, that she did go into the. And I will add to the discussion, his previous agreements that he, he tested to me, he did meet the. They're caught with everything but this requirement. The motion is to, to do the adjustment.
Motion is to adjust the.
Sewer portion.
Your motion is to adjust the sewer portions to two thousand, is that correct? Most of this was originally.
I mean, that's what our legal policy states. That, I mean, that's already what, that's what the legal policy states already. So it's already, yeah.
One, one.
For the one pack.
So, so we're saying that, does, does there have to be a motion be made to make an exception to?
No, you can make the motion to, like you just did.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Trying to think about the language of writing, if that's, if you're not going to adjust it.
Yeah, we can't do a negative motion.
It has to be a positive motion, but the motion was not negative.
So, that was, the motion was to, to hear this adjustment as replaced. To make the adjustment.
Of course, have to be a.
Have to do no calling, and we're going to do something else. Ms. Keisha, call the roll, please.
Wilkerson?
No.
Brown?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one, thirty-one-four.
Thirty-one-four.
The bill will be adjusted to two hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-eight cents. The next item on the agenda is the extension of the trash can ordinance.
I move that we extend the trash ordinance until May first.
One second.
Do we have a motion and a second to extend the trash ordinance to May the first? Now, we'll be in the discussion. We extend this one, we'll extend it if it passes to, to May the first. And we may serve that this petition puts out on notifications so the public know that we have the extension. We do get quite a bit of interest in this, people coming and buying their cans.
We've got two hundred on order and like a hundred and twenty of those sold. People call in, ask if when they're going to get them.
So they are taking good interest in this, and I think the extension is a good thing because it helps them have more time to make the payment.
So, and the reason why we're extending it, just so everybody knows, is because there was a order in, right?
Like I said, there's two ones that are on order now that we're waiting on.
Which those are, some of those things are outside of the scope of what we can control.
We can't control people because we can't buy cans.
Right, right. And so that's the purpose of this, of this going forward, is so that, you know, we're not killing somebody.
And I've also spoke with Aaron about it, too, that, you know, they're not required to buy this can as long as they provide one that works with our system. And at the time, those even people that are not even using them, the trash cans, they, they purchase a, a physical, visible, visible verification that we've saturated everybody with the water. It's not there. But people are having interest in calling and asking about it, so.
And our cans are still cheaper than, like, places like that.
So the extension does make sense.
And what is the price per can?
Ninety-two dollars.
Ninety-two dollars.
And of the two hundred, how many have we got?
Like, a hundred and twenty, something like that.
So the next, the next batch would be whatever that price from that day would, it's a profit so long increase. So there's a incentive for people to buy the notification, you know, to, uh, get allocated the price. So that's important, profit so long, and a notification.
Now, is the number of cans and all that, is that all already in place now, or is that tied to this as well? Because I know initially there wasn't like, before now, there wasn't like a set number of how many you could have and all of this stuff. Is that tied to this, or is that already taken place?
Yeah, you're gonna have no more than two cans or five bags of trash bagged on.
Is that part already?
Right.
That's a divorce. And if you have more than four cans, you have to pay to have more than four cans.
I just wasn't sure if that was tied to this ordinance or not.
It's all one big fortune, it's about.
But it's not about the extension.
We're, we're not, we're not currently enforcing those regulations because of the availability of trash. And in the conversation with Mr. Tragone, a lot of these folks, you know, have the huge trash can, but they only have one or two bags inside those. So it's not efficient for them to actually use the system on their can this time as much, or that's important, you know?
What, so what is the extension, just so we know, can we have, have the extension and then make sure it's in the minutes or five?
Yes.
So we're extending it for how long?
Today, or May first.
And everything else in there is the same, other than the name or anything different? In this case, you call the roll, please, one.
Brown?
Uh, yes.
Albert?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Motion carries, uh, we'll give that every time to give the current, um, deal of the process of, of the amount that we have advertised to people to know. We've done the extension. And the item on the agenda is ordinance number zero-two-two, zero-two-two dash one, the policies and procedures manual. Everything that we have in the most recent copy is the final copy, the final draft, everything, you know? This takes two reads, so we want to hear from us, as to how, how it took place. Let's give a motion.
I immediately pass ordinance zero-two-two, zero-two-two dash one.
Second.
Our motion is second, to pass the ordinance pertaining to the updated policy and procedure. Do you have anything to discuss?
I'd like to point out that zero-two-two, zero-two-two dash one is not policies and procedures manuals. It's a resolution supporting the restoration of historical.
That's R.
Oh, that's a resolution, J K.
Kind of losing ours there.
Policies and procedures is the D O H R study.
Yeah, you're right.
Well, Cameron, I can tell you, we sat for several hours and went literally page by page, by page.
It was a lot of it.
Just look background on what we're doing. It hasn't been very long since we've been the policy procedures of the, but the information.
I did read through it.
The, the information, okay, well, who's your?
Just a little like reading.
The information that we might have made when we started the update process, of course, most of this came about to reconcile the charter changes that were made to make them cohesive. The charter changes trumped the policies and procedures. So we had to make adjustments in the policy procedures to match the charter changes, which were actually minimal. And when we just started this discussion, it was a minimal change, a minimal update. And so when he went over with the paragraph, the paragraph, we changed the considerable amount of stuff. And it's hard to speak to the changes, there are considerable amount of changes in there.
Yeah, I think I have a recap of everything that we changed, if you would like that.
Yeah, the, uh, the, uh, the vacation pay and the holiday pay for the employees is updated. I'm trying to remember things that were updated, if they were questioned, if there's one if we need to update it. That was one, that was one of the notable changes. A lot of it is just changing the language there to update what currently fits one of the.
Yeah, I was familiar with so much stuff, so.
On going, leaving documents has to be changed. And it, from also, I will add this to the discussion, revising this policy every three years, puts it on the authority check or actually. Okay, if we do want to make policy or shake out of this, and so that, that was very information, you know, turning this into a hopefully, and it's different. Do you have anything else? Ms. Keisha, call the roll on the ordinance, please.
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Our motion carries, uh, policies and procedures. Next item on the agenda is resolution R zero-two-two, zero-two-two dash one, the sales tax restoration.
Now we're all this.
Yes. That was the sample that we provided by the county, considering their sewage. If we're in the discussion, if we're in the discussion.
It's not a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve the res- uh, resolution?
One second.
One second.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve the sales tax restoration resolution? It was not something that collectively as a group we discussed. The information come down real quickly and titles should be patched to the second place. Before I talk about it too much, do you have any questions? Well, Ms. Keisha is, at the speed of this one, I understand.
I remember from a previous discussion, the nuts and bolts of it was essentially the state raised their taxes. And historically, the city attained a portion of those taxes, but this time, whenever they raised it, we did not receive our percentage of the percentage, if you will.
For certain.
Like, for several years. Right, so, and so this is us recovering that portion going forward. Not retroactive, but going forward.
And it is just a proposal to support this for the legislature. So there's no guarantee that it will be placed if that, or that we would receive the money that are in that schedule. Schedule actually disshows what we would receive this year if it was effective. There's been quite a bit of dialogue between which were even correct, but.
And I think it was estimated in like forty-one, forty-two thousand, they are additional sales tax revenue that we would bring in for a year.
But because, this is me somewhere, a lot of communication. Because, uh, they didn't give the monies to the cities the way they had it previous time. The way they reported the issue, the regulations and things like that has changed. They didn't really have a clear, a clear city of what per number should be, is that, is that the way I'm changing? So this is just supporting the fact that the seat, that the state works with their policy every year. And that the burden of making up the difference is on the local cities and on the state, basically.
One of the questions, why does it, why did we have to do a resolution to give back sales tax or to have the whole sales tax from the city?
Well, this isn't necessarily one. This resolution is in support of them amending their processes to give that back to us. It's not an additional act.
It's supposed to be just a posturing with.
Yes, and it would collectively, as, as Summer County and other counties, we're, you know, showing that we support this individual city. And that, that was the good one, the resolution is. That, that's the good one thing, resolution is, we're not technically asking, we're asking money, but we're not asking for specific money or specific amount of that. Saying we want you to revise the latest calculated and give us the previous portions that goes back from twenty years.
And they also suggested we reach out to our legislators and.
The county.
I've been to support the bill.
The leadership in the county has actually met with them in person about this very specific topic in the last week, so we have done that as individuals. So I don't know, follow up with, with the governor and budgeting process as we live in here at the moment, so. But that's the ins and outs of this. Mr. Bradley, if he were here, he could probably speak to this in a little more detail than we. Ms. Kishia and I can. If we had that amount of money, different, even a budget, actually, if you had a really different budget here, actually, we wouldn't have part of that decision. If we're starting to do this going forward, regardless of what the government would do. Do you have any replacement? Ms. Kishia, Callagall, on the resolution.
Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Motion carries. The last item on the agenda is promote Caleb Gray to be assistant public work supervisor. Aaron and Caleb come up front, please, with your position.
I'll make the motion that we promote Caleb Gray to be assistant public work supervisor.
Second.
We, we need to include.
Yes, I'm not sorry, I'm not, not finished, kind of. Make a motion to promote Caleb Gray to assistant public work supervisor with a, includes a pay increase of fifty cents an hour.
Second.
And that, you think, right there active to the first day that. Shane is not the first day after his last day. Do you know what date that was?
Oh, I've got it.
Okay. Y'all have, you're okay with that, you accept some responsibilities for that. And you'd see the scripture and everything.
Yeah, I found a stack of those job descriptions of years.
It is a huge responsibility and I know you're a gentleman, seeing a lot of stuff that you do, be involved in, we appreciate you stepping up to the plate to take on that initiative.
And you endured this effort, so the last thing.
Yeah. We have motion in second to pay Caleb Gray, which will be fifty cents, please, the assistant public work supervisor. Ms. Kishia, Callagall.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Item on the agenda more for this. Appreciate y'all coming out. Appreciate y'all coming out with the.